We have a fifth meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Can we call the roll, please?
Andres Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Brandy Eber.
Here.
Daniel George.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
Radhika Krishna and Scott Pulis are excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, we will... Are there any disclosures? Commissioner Gardner?
I'll just pop in here. Don't anticipate that this is anything that would require recusal, but I'll just put on the record that the representatives... I just see in the audience here, the representative for the petitioner is someone I've met before and I know because I work with her husband in my job pretty closely, but not thing to do with this particular application. And I don't see any conflict associated with it.
If anybody has any objection, we will just move right past that disclosure. Hearing none. I will read the process by which the public can testify. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at this meeting is: One, after staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask the public for public testimony on the issue. Two, persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. The petitioner, including his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. Any party of interest wishing to appeal shall first file with the planning director within seven days of the commission's decision made on the record a written notice of intent to appeal in accordance with AMC 2103-050A4A. Commission recommendations to the Anchorage Assembly are not appealable. Following approval of written findings of fact and decision, any party of interest may within 20 days file an appeal by filing a notice of appeal and paying the appeal fee and deposit in accordance with Section 2103-050. The notice of appeal must be filed with the planning director on a form prescribed by the municipality. If the appellant is not the applicant, the appellant's notice of appeal shall include proof of service on the applicant. Okay, we will move on to public hearing item, case 2024-0016. Can we please have staff presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request to make amendments to an existing conditional use permit for a childcare center. Little Mountain Movers Academy wants to increase the number of children that they serve, triple the number of children that they serve, and to be able to operate under whatever hours and ages of children as permitted by their childcare license with Anchorage Health Department. None of the state and reviewing municipal... State and municipal reviewing agencies object to the request. 621 public hearing notices were mailed out on January 12th. There are two responses from the public that are in the packet. They are attached. The Northeast Community Council provided a letter of support for granting the amendments to the conditional use. And there are three laid-on-the-table items: supplementary Packet 1, supplementary Packet 2, and comments that we received today. And these are all comments from the public, and then there's one from the traffic department. And so the Planning Department found that the nine approval criteria for conditional use approval have been met for the reasons stated in the staff report. And the department's recommending approval of this... These amendments to the conditional use for a childcare center, subject to conditions 1, 2, and 3, on pages 5 and 6 of your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Commissioner Strike, go ahead. Try to speak up your little muscle.
I will speak up. I will speak up. Thank you. In reading the petition here, I noticed that Little Mountain Movers Academy occupies 20 acres in a building that houses 26 classrooms, three playgrounds, three gyms, et cetera. Is this property, is this school being used for any other purpose other than the current maximum 100 daycare students?
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, can you repeat that question, that last part, what the question was?
Well, currently, the conditional use applies for up to 100 students. And looking at the facility, this facility has 26 classrooms, three playgrounds, three indoor gyms. And my question is, with all this massive facility, is it strictly restricted to these 100 daycare students, or is this facility also being used for other purposes, i.e. another school?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Or thank you, Mr. Strike, through the chair. Yeah, there's a religious assembly at the property, a private school, and the childcare center, and other religious ministries associated with the church. All of those are taking place at the property.
Concurrently with the daycare, operating Monday through Friday?
There's an existing childcare center there, the Little Mountain Movers Academy. They're permitted to have 100 students, and they want to do 300.
So my concern is, with 26 classrooms, that's a great size to ratio, and that's wonderful. I mean, that's four students per room. So what I'm asking is, is there another grade school or any other educational facilities also happening Monday through Friday at this same site, or is this site strictly dedicated to preschool?
So in my discussions with the applicant, the childcare center occupies some classrooms, and they're gonna expand into some vacant classrooms. The school, I think, is at a different wing, kind of like a different building that's attached, where the... I don't know how much overlap there is, but there's a private school there, and then there's the childcare center. And there are no changes to the property. As the applicant explained to me, the only permit that she will seek from the building's safety division, if the conditional use amendment is approved, is to install a sink in one of the classrooms because of the age of the children that they serve.
Thank you. We'll wait the petitioner to respond then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I guess my question relates to the prior conditions, or maybe not prior, but current conditions, on the use with respect to the ages and the times of use. And I didn't see in the prior resolution, and I may have missed it, anything kind of explaining the thinking behind those restrictions. And I understand that the proposed change would eliminate both of those restrictions, both with respect to age and time. And I think, as childcare center is defined, it goes up to age 18. And I was just wondering if you had any background on something I may have missed with respect to the history of this, and why those limitations were originally put in place, and what the thinking is currently on removing them?
Through the chair, Mr. Gardner, I did look into that, and I wasn't able to determine why the conditions of approval were so specific and strict. I don't know if the staff report was written just based on the applicant's application at the time, and they were just specifically outlining what they had been approved for. And now, you know, some... That was in 2001. Now, you know, 23 years later, they... You know, it would make more sense to have some flexibility, because it's like says exactly how many infants they can have and all that. And the Planning Department's position on that is that the childcare license... Because the professional... You know, I've met the people in the Health Department that go into the classrooms and evaluate the schools and license them. And that's... They have a whole set of regulations, you know, how much play space the kids need to have, and the types of bathrooms, and locks, and ratios of certified teachers. It's just not something that seems to be a zoning issue.
Thank you.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yeah, well, you address the right-of-way comments on page 40, where they talk about the petitioner agreeing to make infrastructure improvements to the site. Most of the comments against this, we're hearing about increased traffic, and we weren't... We didn't have the letter from the traffic department in our original packets. But can you just talk about the traffic issue a little bit in broader terms?
Yes. Well, so the comment from the right-of-way division was a little confusing, because they said that, you know, come in for a permit for work, like in the right-of-way, because that's their role. And upon receiving that, the applicant and I walked over and talked to Mike Walters, who wrote those comments. And he said, "Oh, yeah, no, you guys are fine. If you add any new driveways or make any changes into the public right-of-way, then you'd need a permit." So that clarified what he meant by what he wrote. The traffic department, they said that the site is adequate. It's got two driveways on the Northern Lights and one on Baxter. And there's free, you know, site circulation all the way around the building into all those driveways. And the traffic department's comments were very supportive, and I think that DOT had no comment. You know, obviously, this is on a collector and a major arterial. I mean, Northern Lights Boulevard has things like, you know, malls and grocery stores. And, you know, these are roads that are intended for lots of vehicle traffic.
Can you confirm that this is in... Is this in the Northeast Community Council?
It is.
Okay, good. I think there's a typo on the front of the packet.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Okay, I see no further questions for staff. We will have the petitioner's presentation. You have to... There should be a button to turn the mic on. There, there you go.
Hello?
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Dr. Jessica Parker. I'm the superintendent of Little Mountain Movers Academy and Mountain City Christian Academy. May I present?
You're ready.
All right. Thank you. Through the chair, I'd like to thank the commission for hearing our case, and also the planning departments for reviewing our applications. We are asking for a capacity increase from 100 to 300 students. Little Mountain Movers Academy has been in existence for 50 years. We're longstanding. We're one of the largest, birthed through four preschool in Anchorage, Alaska. We're one of only three infant care programs. And we receive families from all over Anchorage, but in particular, about 30% of our families, they use the Childcare Assistance Program. And we have very... Our tuition is lower than the industry standards. We're very proud of that. We don't plan on raising our tuition next year either. Our goal is just to serve more students. We have a very large facility, as you heard, 20 acres, three playgrounds. One of those is indoors, which is very Alaska-friendly. And we have three gymnasiums, and also access to a lot of the church facilities, such as large lobbies, and the auditorium, and a cafeteria. We do have 26 classrooms, and we are not making any changes to our existing space. We have enough vacant classrooms to accommodate the growth. We actually have four entrances. It's a very long building. The first entrance is used for church, and we receive about 1,000 people every Sunday. And then the second entrance is used for the preschool. The third entrance is for high school, or secondary, 6th through 12th grade. And the fourth entrance is used for elementary, which is kindergarten through 5th grade. So we do anticipate, with the increased growth, on moving the entrance of the preschool to the very back. That way, it would be the only entrance utilized for those families. But we do have lots of space, and we can definitely handle the traffic. We already handle 1,000 people on Sundays. We do have 476 students that come in every single day, Monday through Friday, at the Mountain City Christian Academy side. But again, that leaves plenty of space for us to accommodate to the growth. We also have summer programs, after-school programs, lots of community connections. We have met with childcare licensing, been communicating with them about our request, and they have given us preapproval to file for the licensing almost immediately. We don't anticipate growing to 300 overnight, but we do hope to open up our doors to reach 200 pretty quickly because of our waitlist. We have about 88 people on the waitlist, and many of them for over a year. So we'd like to increase capacity to 200 pretty quickly, and then regroup with licensing to see what we need to do. We already have the staffing to accommodate 200 as well. And what else? We are an incredible program. We're very, very proud of the foundational daycare that we offer at Anchorage. And upon your approval, we hope to move forward with this capacity increase. I would like to reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal. Thank you.
I will ask the question, hopefully, for Mr. Strike. So I heard 476 students, and then with the addition... If this was to be approved with an additional 300 in daycare, is that 776 students coming to the site daily?
Yes.
Okay. And then is there any other... I'm sure there's staff and this and that. Is there any other large number of people visiting the site daily to speak of?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Gardner?
Hi, thank you. I have, if I may, I think, just two quick questions with respect to traffic. The first is, I'm curious, you mentioned with the change for the preschool entrance. Do you anticipate that changing how people would access the site from Northern Lights, or would they still be entering through the same driveway, which it sounds like has been across from, I don't know if it's Cimarron, or how that's pronounced? What's your understanding, if that would make any change or not?
My guess is it'd be 50/50. I bet 50% would, out of just habit, enter that way. But they'd have to go all the way around, and it's a long building. I think over time, I bet 90% of them will start to use that second entrance from the back.
And is that second entrance the one that's further, I guess, west on Northern Lights? Still off of Northern Lights, or is it off of Baxter?
It's off of Baxter.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other one is, one of the comments that we received mentioned, talked about the different times that kids would get picked up from the daycare program. And I was wondering if you could just speak briefly to what the... Your understanding, your experience has been with when and how kids get dropped or picked off... Dropped off or picked up from this program?
Through the chair, typically, most people drop off at 7:00 a.m. and pick up at 4:00 p.m. That's pretty traditional. But with... Next year in particular, we're offering part-time kindergarten. So that means a good 50 parents would be picking their kids up at... Dropping them off at 8:00, picking them up at noon, and then the other half would drop off at noon, pick up at 4:00. So that'll also kind of stagger the transportation. We also offer part-time for infant through preschool as well. So those... That's already in existence. So those staggered pickup and drop-offs are already in place. But in addition to that, our Mountain City Christian Academy, we're opening the new part-time kindergarten. So that will increase the staggered pickups.
Thank you.
Commissioner George?
Thank you through the chair. Thank you for your presentation here this evening. I just had a quick question. In the public comments, and I don't know if you have a copy of this one that was laid on the table for us this evening, there is one comment in here about a 20-foot screening easement that is on the replat for the property from 1986 against Chester Creek, which, according to this comment, may have been cleared over the years, to the point where it's just grass. Given the adjacent use of residential and the increased anticipated vehicular and daily traffic, do you, as the petitioner, anticipate repopulating that screening easement to provide a buffer to the residential area?
Through the chair, may I field that question, and then Ms. Parker can supplement my answer if she has anything to add. So this was a late comment received, and I read that comment as well. So first, I have to congratulate the gentleman and his wife who wrote those comments, because they said that they'd lived in the same house for 47 years, and so that's really something. Colgate Avenue is not abutting the petition site. It's on the other side of Chester Creek, and then it's a street away. I look up the address, and I drove there prior to the meeting to... And I think that his chief concern is with, like, erosion along the creek bed and some of the, you know, like deforestation within the park tract that's on municipal property. What there is, is at the end of Colgate Avenue, I think it is, the... There's a bike trail that connects to Brittany and into the next neighborhood over. You can bicycle from this neighborhood all the way to Begich Middle School on the east, near Muldoon, and the Krispy Kremes and all that. And so I think it's just like people... And there's a lot of children that use that bike trail, that maybe some have just sort of played around near the creek or something. But the... I don't think it's an issue of landscaping or the landscape easement on property.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Without the benefit of a map here in front of me, it's difficult to determine exactly what they're referring to. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add?
No. Thank you.
I guess I'll just ask, is there a landscape easement on the property?
Yes, there's a 20-foot landscape easement that encircles the property, with the exception of... It's either Baxter or Northern Lights doesn't have it. But on the north, sort of slanted property line, and on the east property line, it's there. And it's on one more. I can pull the plat.
Commissioner Winchester?
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Just a quick question on total number of students served. You have some empty classrooms and whatnot. I'm just wondering if perhaps you had served that level of students in the past. Maybe things have been declining, but just have you served, you know, larger groups of students in the past than this?
Through the chair, yes. Mountain City Christian Academy used to be near double in size, and we decreased years, which has opened up that space. So it's existing space that was already there, and now we're hoping to fill it through preschool.
I see no further questions. We will now open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. State your name for the record.
Jeff Nisley.
On behalf of yourself?
Yes.
Okay. Could you spell your last name, please?
Sure. It's K-N-I-S-L-E-Y.
Go for it.
Yeah, so I live across the street. There are only three street entrances and exits to the facility. I guess safety's the primary concern here. It's already a very traffic intense situation, because everyone arrives and comes, you know, comes and goes, you know, within a short period of time. And although she mentioned Sunday, they handle larger volume. It is Sunday, and none of the other schools are running, and people are not traveling to and from work. So Sunday is a bit of an outlier to say there is not a traffic problem. And people kind of trickle into the church, and, you know, slower, because there's not a time constraint where everyone needs to be in the classroom when the class starts. It is also 45 mile an hour speed zone there, and in multiple places, people are both crossing. You'll have multiple people turning left, cross-traffic. So it's definitely going to end, I think, in some pretty high-speed traffic crashes there. If people go down and use Baxter where the light is, that certainly would be one way to alleviate this. I originally thought this was more for older kids. Now that I realize that these little kids cannot ride the bus, I was going to say, "Well, I'm fine with it going to 300, but can we just put the kids on a bus?" But I realize now, these kids are going to be too small to ride buses, so it means every kid's going to be drove to and from the school by their parents, which is really going to increase the amount of traffic, again, increasing those safety concerns, as everyone's trying to get in and out. I mean, it's not road rage, but sometimes you just give up and just turn right and drive all the way down to Patterson, because you just cannot get out by making those left-hand turns, because there's people coming out of this church parking lot while we're trying to come out of our neighborhoods. I think with Baxter Elementary going on right next door, it's not... This is not an isolated thing. We already have a big push around the same times of people infiltrating the neighborhood and trying to use the roadway. Baxter Elementary, at least, is a school zone, and they slow the cars down, so less likely of a high-speed injury or accident resulting in injuries. And then also, they have crossing guards, and they have lights that they push to stop the traffic. It's a bit of a zoo over there when the kids are getting picked up, if you've never experienced it. I mean, there's cars. I've never seen traffic patterns that form just quite like they do over there. It's certainly not normal. But they seem to get by, because everyone's going very slow, and they somewhat know what to experience. But yeah, my main concern is just the traffic. Had they been older students, I'd have been, "I'm fine with it. Just make sure they ride the buses." But since they're little kids, the only way they're going to get to and from. The one thing she did say that I liked a lot was possibly staggering when they arrive, so that we don't have everyone trying to make all those turns at the same time. And that's all.
Thank you. I see no questions. Anybody else wishing to testify? Please step forward, state your name.
Down, because I'm super short. Hadassa Knight. I can spell it.
Spell it.
H-A-D-A-S-S-A-H. Knight, K-N-I-G-H-T.
Go ahead.
Okay. Members of the Planning and Zoning Committee, esteemed parents, guardians, educators, leaders, and valued community members, it is not merely our responsibility but our collective duty to empower the next generation with unwavering belief, never restricting their potential by uttering the words "you can't." Today, I stand before you to celebrate a remarkable place that embodies the philosophy: Little Mountain Movers Academy. Nestled in our community, Little Mountain Movers is not just a preschool and daycare. It's a beacon of dedication of health, wellness, and education. At its core, the academy is committed to fostering the growth and development of each child, placing their well-being and progress at its utmost priority. Little Mountain Movers meets every child where they are, recognizing them not as mere numbers, but as unique individuals. They comprehend the distinctive needs of each child, ensuring that care, education, and learning tools are precisely tailored to suit their requirements. The result is cultivation and nurturing of the children's incredible minds and talents. The academy's holistic approach, seamlessly integrating play, learning, and the arts, has proven to be a catalyst for instilling a genuine desire and excitement to learn. My son, currently attending Little Mountain Movers, can... My son, currently attending Little Mountain Movers, can confidently navigate his ABCs, spell words, engage in basic math, and even write his name independently. His preparedness for kindergarten, coupled with an ignited passion for learning and unwavering belief in his capabilities, is a testament to the dedicated educators and administrators who have championed his journey. This nurturing environment doesn't happen by chance. It is deliberate orchestration by the academy's exceptional students or teachers, supported by a visionary administration committed to empowering educators with effective curricula. All of this unfolds under the protective umbrella of a safe, healthy, and inspiring learning space. Witnessing such a level of care, health, and education is not only heartening, but essential for our growing community. Little Mountain Movers Academy steps forward as a solution to bridge the childcare gap, providing a haven for parents seeking unparalleled quality in childcare services. Today, each one of you has an incredible opportunity to open the doors that lead to life-changing possibilities. Embrace this chance to be a part of a community that values the growth and development of its youngest members. Little Mountain Movers Academy is the catalyst for this change. Together, let us embark on a journey to shape futures, and in doing so, build a legacy of excellence, inspiration, and boundless possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no questions. Anybody else wishing to testify, please step up. Seeing none, we will allow the petitioner time for rebuttal.
Thank you. I only had one other thing to add, and that's to speak to the security of our facility. We have two full-time security guards on staff at all times. All of our doors are locked, and we have a buzz-in system for our families, and video surveillance is prolific. We can even see all the way out to the outreaches of our parking lot. It's one of our major selling points to our families. We have an extremely secure facility and do regular drills as well, so very proud of that. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will close the public hearing. Oh, sorry, we're open again. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one quick question for the petitioner, if you wouldn't mind. We've heard some discussion about potentially overlapping uses during, during the school day. And my apologies if I didn't catch this already, but could you talk about the start time of the preschool relative to the Mountain City Academy? So drop-off times for the school versus the preschool?
Yes. My preschool director is here, and she is an expert in the start time. So can I call her up to speak to those specific start times, and we can tag-team this answer? This is Lauren Dowd. She is the preschool director.
Our preschool times are 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, so it's a pretty wide variety, and they can drop off anytime between 7:00 AM and 9:00, and then pick up anytime after that. So it's pretty staggered for most of the day. We do have a couple of sections that are a little more high, more traffic, but it's still not anything compared to when they do start times of school.
And Mountain City Christian Academy is 8:15 to 3:15, and on Wednesdays, we get out at 2:30.
Are there any other questions? Now we will officially close the public hearing. What is the will of the body? Commissioner Gardner, do you wish to just speak freely and not make a motion?
I can make a motion as needed, but I've got a question, I guess, for staff first. I was, I guess, on page six of the application, which is the approval condition three. I guess two questions. One is, it increases the number of eligible children to 300. And I'm, I think, if they were to go above that, that would require a similar process, and just want to confirm that.
That's correct. If they wanted 301, they'd have to return to the commission and seek a conditional use amendment, same as they have now.
Okay. And then the other thing I just wanted to confirm, the second sentence, there, this approval does not limit the ages of the children, nor the days of the week, and the hours of operation. I'm assuming, too, that the department would not interpret that to go contrary to any other operational restrictions that might apply, or age limits that come in from the definition of childcare center, or from any other source and code. That's not intended to override anything?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Now I can move, if the chair would.
We're ready to hear motions.
Okay. I move in case 2024-0016 to approve an amendment to a conditional use for a childcare center in the R2A district, subject to the conditions shown on pages five and six of the staff report.
That is seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. I plan to support the motion. I think it meets the approval criteria identified in the staff packet, and there are, I think, two that I'll speak to specifically and briefly. One is the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all applicable provisions of this title and applicable state and federal regulations, in particular emphasizing the East Anchorage District Plan and the note to improve access to needed social services. I think we can all, I think, be pretty comfortable in stating that there's a large need for childcare services of all sorts throughout the city, and this is a, a large increase to the available services in that area, which I think is a, a great benefit to the community. And we heard that there's a, there's a lengthy waiting list, that this will help ameliorate just for this particular program. In addition, criteria number six, which speaks to compatibility with uses allowed on adjacent properties, and specifically mentions traffic generation, I think that's kind of the stickiest piece of this that probably most, if not all, of the testimony we heard against this spoke to. On that point, I mean, there's no doubt that there will be some increased traffic generation associated with this, but I think that will be minimized for a couple of reasons, one of which is the change in the entrance to the location for this program, to the back, which will lead to the easiest access off of Baxter as opposed to Northern Lights where it currently is, and I think that's, will be less disruptive to general traffic. Also, this program will have staggered start and pickup time options, including part-time available programs, which will minimize all of traffic combining at one point in time. So for those reasons, I will support the motion.
Anybody else wishing to speak to the motion? Hearing seeing none, we will call for the vote.
Ms. Eber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Are there any commissioner comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner George. Hearing no objections, we are now adjourned. Thank you.